Morning. I'm gonna have to stay with you. It happened the day before Thanksgiving. Mind yourself, Egon. Didn't give you more room.
No, I'm good.
I'm used to nobody being there.
You got company.
Bobby, my beer on?
Hey, John. What's up here? Does this have the proposed changes in it?
It does.
Okay.
Six o'clock, we're good. We're ready to hear Bobby.
All right.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
You all right?
Good.
Fine, how are you?
Your councilmate.
Hey, Frank. Are we, when we open the meeting tonight, will we be able to be heard here?
No.
Okay. So we need to speak up. Will we be heard on YouTube?
Yes.
Okay. He was asking. Thank you.
Well, you didn't see State House go crazy. Quite.
I told him that he saved me about a thousand dollars, so.
In good. I'll give him the ball, you best.
Still talking about the game?
Yes, I am.
And you can't run.
Yeah. That's down. The V A kids.
Yeah. You better get outside.
You gotta be strategic about it, you know?
Start over.
Colts are 10 times better than the Panthers. Hundred percent.
That many times, I'd say that. Can't keep anybody out. Another one now.
Could be by the Dolphins, but. Might need to start over.
That's what I thought we were doing through you. That was the plan.
In the South. We got the two week block, right? I think next season we'll have that NFC football, Redskins, Cowboys. That's who, probably, football.
Everybody fluke loves. And then there's one.
Excuse me.
Always host the same team. It's just the same place that they do. They'll host them. So like Panthers and the Cowboys both finished third. That was the Cowboys. That's what everybody always watches to see. It was the Eagles this year.
Eagles.
We just haven't had the Rams card.
It's the Hawks.
Ready, Roger. Ready?
That's wrong.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, that's wrong.
That's way wrong, yeah.
We're fired after.
Hanging in there. I just didn't know the clock was right.
Jason fixed mine in there.
Thanks for making me aware of that. We'll put that in the budget.
Better.
I call this work session of the Richlands Town Council to order. Would you please stand for the invitation? That is Frank. Father, thank you again for the opportunity to meet together with members of council and the citizens of Richlands, our manager, attorney, clerk, everyone. We're so appreciative for this opportunity to gather together in the spirit of what's best for the town. We all have different ideas. We pray that you will be done. Thank you again for this day, the blessings of life, and we pray for a wonderful holiday season. Merry Christmas and a new year. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I see? Okay, we don't have a microphone up here tonight. This caller asked that we speak loudly so we can all be heard. And thank you very much for the help with that. So we have before us a work session agenda. And first of the meeting is called a meeting to order. Invitation, pledge of allegiance, just to review these very quickly. They are discussion of charter changes, ARCA funding discussion, discussion of public comment rules, and then to recess the meeting. Well, actually, during the meeting. So what I want to tell you first is the Richlands Planning Commission will be having a public hearing at seven o'clock. Is that right? Okay. And that is concerning the actuary business. And shortly before that, we'll recess this meeting temporarily so that our representative to the commission, Jeff Hurst, and the members of the commission can meet here in this room at the public presence. And they'll conduct their meeting, which won't take too long, I don't think. But it takes what it takes. And then we'll resume our meeting shortly after the meeting of the planning commission, the public hearing. Thank you. I'll pass this along. What we're getting here are the proposed charter changes, which are, here's the original charter decorum. Trying to bring some things. All right, so we have first on the agenda, next on the agenda, we have, okay, Richard?
Forgot my pledge.
Oh, okay. We'll just wait a minute, because it's hard to get at work without seeing. I'll get that. Anyway, what's the first thing on the agenda after the pledge is discussion of charter changes. And John has on the screens, the two screens here, the, well, it's our charter. And I guess he could scroll down to the first proposed changes. Is that how you would like to do it, John? And that, okay with you? All right, so if you look here, the first proposed change is on page 11. And just in a minute, Richard will be back. We can begin this with all members present. And that is item number one, it's here, moved on the, in the right-hand margin here on page 11. And it's under 3.2 nominations and elections. And got everything okay? And then item one, it's in red on our copies on page 11. Each member of council should be limited to two elected four-year terms in office. Times served, number two, is time served as an appointed member of council or elected in a special election shall not count toward the term limit described above. So the chair is opening. Point one for discussion.
All right, Mayor, before we start, I believe these are the changes we discussed at a previous workshop some time ago. So I tried to make sure that I updated it as close to what I thought the council's intent was at that time. There were four items to look at that have been brought up as potential changes. I believe two of those councils decided not to do anything with, but I'd still like to go over those just briefly to make sure that everybody's still on the same page. And then after we get kind of a consensus on what council would like to see as the changes, we will have the attorneys review that to make sure there's no issues that we're unaware of that could be created because of the changes. And then it'll be our plan to have a public hearing at our January meeting to allow public comment on this item. Because by then we'll have a draft proposal that can be reviewed by citizens. And then we'll vote on it at the January, or council will vote on it at the January meeting.
Following the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a good idea to have public input in a formal way. Thank you, John.
So there are only four. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's four. They're numbered in the handout.
That's fine. So I appreciate what you're saying. So this is the edited version based on our last discussion.
Right.
Okay. So here we go. So I'll read it again. This is about the limitation, term limits, okay? What we commonly call term limits. And again, it says, one, each member of council should be limited to two elected four-year terms, two elected four-year terms. Terms served as an appointed member of council or elected in a special election shall not count toward the term limit described above. Okay, members of council, your thoughts?
May I go?
Yes, sir.
Just my thinking. Term limits sound great. But when you get to thinking about it, you're taking power away from the people. And this is not going to make any difference to me personally, because I'm sure not, I'll be 100 if I did all this. Term limits. I think it's taken away people's choice. If they want you on there for 100 years, I mean, let them vote you on there. It's, why would council decide who's on council and who's not? It's the people's choice. And I'll probably say this on all four of them again. This charter's been in use for many, many, many years. And I think it's a big choice when you want to change something that's worked for many, many years. So I'm against changing anything in a charter.
Thank you, Doug. Are there other members of council who would like to express thoughts? No matter what they are regarding item number one. John has it marked here, red on page 11. Seeing, hearing that discussion on this point, we'll move on to item number two. No further discussion. And this is on page 12, the next page, 3.5, Mayor. And it's in blue. Well, it's up here in red. It's fine on our page. The mayor shall preside over the meetings of the council. And the original said, but it's not a member thereof, have the, and that's been scratched, all right, or deleted, potentially deleted. The mayor shall preside over the meetings of council and have the same right to speak therein as a member and vote only in case of a tie on any matter before council, including ordinances and resolutions. I'll read the rest, which is not a change, but there is going to be one later. But shall have no veto. The mayor should be recognized as the head of the town government for all ceremonial purposes, the purpose of military law, and the service of civil process. At the regular meeting of the council held in the month of January following a municipal election, the council shall choose by a majority vote of all the members thereof, one of their number to be vice mayor for the ensuing two years. The vice mayor shall, in the absence or disability of the mayor, perform the duties of mayor, and this is in addition. Okay, right there it is. Shall not lose their duties as a member of council, including but not limited to voting. If a vacancy shall occur in the office of mayor, the vice mayor shall become the mayor for the unexpired portion of the term. In the absence or disability of both the mayor and vice mayor, the council shall, by majority vote of those present, choose one of their number to perform the duties of mayor. And the selected member, this is in addition. Okay. And the selected member shall not lose their duties as a member of the council, including but not limited to voting. Take a minute and make sure we know what we're doing. Okay?
And I believe of the four, this was the one that we kind of stopped at last time that we did kind of really didn't get a decision or consensus.
Let me read it. I have to read myself, too. So I have to understand.
Are we changing anything here or just clarifying?
I'm just making sure I understand it, Jeff. Feel free to comment.
I mean, is there, is there a clarification? Maybe a clarification?
As I understand it, Jeff, the in appearance are red on our copy. It's in blue, I think. The, what is, the strike throughs are what were in the charter. And the proposed additions are up here in red. We're reading blue. Does that make sense to you?
The way I understood it also was just to take away any ambiguity and make it clearer.
Bob, let me ask you a question. We have a tie on ordinance and resolution, 3-3. Mayor gets to vote. Correct?
Correct.
So all we're doing really is adding in on any matter before council, including ordinances and resolutions. We're just clarifying that that's the case. Is that what we're doing here?
I think so, Mike. The mayor can vote in case of a tie.
Right.
Clarifies, like already been done.
Okay.
And then Mike, thank you for clarifying that, because there has been a concern. And the other part that is, I guess you call it a clarification, is the second part. It says the, it's at the bottom of page 12, which is what Mary Ann was talking about. The vice mayor shall, in the absence or disability of the mayor, perform the duties of mayor, but shall not lose their duties as a member of council, including but not limited to voting. And that is an addition to the charter. It's not a change, it's an addition. Is that right?
It's a clarification.
I think clarification, I think that's what the case already.
It's never, I mean, may I speak?
Sure.
It's not a clarification. It's never been that the vice mayor, I mean, when the vice mayor took over as mayor, they've never been allowed to vote. It's not. You might say it is, but it's not. Even one of the council members months ago admitted that they didn't have the power to vote because they were taking over the duties of mayor. But of course, lawyers got involved and they interpreted it the way that they want to, which is wrong. I'm not, you know, on you. But we, we had this all so many, many years before you, you're, you got involved that they could not vote. And they even admitted it. So I'm sure that you guys got together and figured out a way to go around the charter. That's fine. But what I want to say on this whole thing is, even the first part of it, that takes away the checks and balances. There's three, three checks and balances. There's a town manager, there's a mayor, and there's a council. If we change the first part of it like we, like is proposed, we're diminishing the mayor because that's one of the checks and balances. The mayor is all out there by himself. So is the town manager to run the government. And then you've got the council. Those three entities should be distinctly apart because they perform different duties. And if we change this, it not only affects this part of the charter, but if you read the charter all the way down, it keeps referring back to this, how the mayor is separate, how the council's separate, and how the town manager is separate. And to me, I wouldn't change this part especially.
What are you talking about?
Change.
3.5.
Yes. Making the, I mean, the mayor is not part of the council. He's a separate entity. And if you put him with the council, you're diminishing his role and what his duties are. That's the way, and you're, you're, I love history, I have a master's in history, you do, too. And you know what checks and balances are. We're both students of history. I taught history in college for many years. And you're desecrating what role the mayor plays if you do this. He should be separate, and he's a separate entity, and it gives him more power. If you put him with the council, you're diminishing his role, in my opinion. Okay? The second part, everybody understood for many, many, many years that the mayor was separate from council. And when the vice mayor took over as mayor in his absence, they never voted. Never. And it was understood, even, I can go back in the minutes if you like, or if Connie was here and she can read you, the many years that this has been a tradition. And not four months ago, a council admitted we had to adjourn because they could not vote. We could not pass something, as you remember, Mayor. And they admitted, I can't vote. But all of a sudden, when they meet with an attorney, what usually happens, they find, I'm not being disrespectful, but attorneys always find a way, and to the other attorney here, too, they always find a way to get around what's tradition and what's been passed over many, many years and try to change it progressively, they think, and change everything, and it screws up later. And I wouldn't change any of this. You can't wear two hats. You can't run a meeting and then vote unless it's a tie, as the mayor does.
Who would ever run the meeting?
Who?
Who would ever want to be vice mayor in that situation?
I was vice mayor for many, many years. I loved it. I didn't, I didn't have a problem.
But you said no up there because you're afraid you're going to lose your vote, though, right? I mean, that's what, that's what it would turn into, as far as what I see. Like, nobody would want it. In this case, who would, who would want to be vice mayor if they said, well, I'm going to lose my vote?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the way, that's the way the charter is written.
So who would run the meeting?
That's the way the charter is written. But you can't wear two hats, Jeff. You can't run a meeting and not sway it one way or the other. And nobody's going to admit it, but the mayor, I mean.
I think you'd have a hard, I think you'd have a hard time finding a vice mayor.
I have a thought on this.
Yeah.
I tried to interrupt, John. I'm grateful for all, everybody's feeling this. But I get your point and get your point, sitting in this chair. But I'm going to suggest that each person take number than two rounds of discussion. It's not any rules, just a suggestion, so that we don't have a back and forth volley, so to speak. I hope that's a respectful request. So Doug?
Can I finish my first one?
You have two more. Jeff, you have two. Or anybody. That's unreasonable to council.
Sure.
But just to lay some simple ground rules here. Go ahead.
Okay, let me finish. This is my first one, right?
Is our time keeper here? There's no time left. I'm just curious. Go ahead, I'll keep track. There's no time.
It's just hard if you run a meeting and, were you, were you mean to or not, your vice is going to be leading that meeting. It's going to, it's going to come into effect some way, the way you run that meeting. And you can't run a meeting and be over a meeting and not have your vice a little bit show through and then wear another hat. You're going to vote on something that you've been over the meeting. It's like wearing two hats. And to me, common sense would tell you that's ludicrous, that you can run a meeting and then have another vote that you've just probably, without your knowledge, your vice is going to come through the way you run that meeting. Okay? If you understand?
I do. I'm just keeping track of the conversation, not recording what you're saying. But thank you, Doug. Jeff, did you have a response?
Well, I, like I said, listened to Doug, but I guess being new to this, or when I came in there, you know, I was confused about, you know, the rule, the role of the vice mayor. You know, I guess that was what I was trying to, and if you think about it this way, you know, nobody would ever want to be vice mayor if you had a, you know, who would run the meeting? Because, you know, then you say, well, I want to vote on the issue. I don't want to not vote. I was elected, I was elected as a council member. You know, I was elected as a council member to vote. But somebody's got to run the meeting, so who's going to run the meeting? The mayor, you know, if the mayor was sick or whatever.
Just one sentence to inject to help.
Just a minute, please. Jeff, do you have any more? I want to say I'll comment one. Like, this is comment two.
This, Richard, interject his sentence. This is just to help him, okay?
Okay.
This is not my second.
Okay.
Rarely happens, Jeff. You talk like that happens every day. This might happen one in five years.
Because it happened another night.
Well, I know, but that's, that's the exception.
That's the exception.
I just want to, I just want to clarify since you're new. This very rarely happens, and you're trying.
But it happened to me. What happened here, and that's when Doug said, no. You were afraid you were going to lose your vote.
That's the first time that, I've been on here almost 20 years. That's one of the first times I remember that.
But it happened.
But you're giving, you're giving away a charter that's been into existence many, many years for a fluke that happened one in 20 years. And, okay, that's all I'm saying from.
Points are both taken both ways.
If I might take the liberty to respond to Mr. Ratliff, when he says that this is not a clarification, it is in fact a clarification. The council will recall that this issue arose before the council, when Mary Ann Strong as vice mayor assumed your position in your absence. And she voted, and the issue was whether or not she had a right to vote as a member of council when she was serving as vice mayor and serving as mayor in the absence of the mayor. And she did vote. And a lawsuit was brought in which Mr. Ratliff was a witness and expressed many of the same views before the circuit court of Tazza County that he's expressed tonight as to what the council charter really meant. And what the court ruled was that the vice mayor had every right to continue to vote as right of, as a member of council and did not lose that vote by serving in the absence or disability of the mayor. So that was the decision of the circuit court, which confirmed our advice to council, which allowed Strong to vote on the issues that were for the council.
That case would be three.
So, so it was our advice that the vice mayor, serving in the absence or disability of mayor, did not lose the vote. And she did vote. And that issue was brought before the circuit court. It was ruled on by the circuit court that, in fact, the vice mayor did not lose the right to vote and by serving in the absence or disability of the mayor. This language clarifies just what the court ruling was. She shall not lose that duty, shall not lose those duties as a member of council, including but limited to voting. So this expressly says what we think the charter already said and what the circuit court of Tazza County ruled.
So Bobby, if there was like a 3-3 tie in that case, then the motion would fail, correct? Because there wouldn't be a tiebreaker, right?
Well, you've got to have a majority vote for it.
Exactly. For the passion.
The issue was whether the vice mayor lost the right to vote, except in a case of tie.
May I speak on that and not be my second?
I'm not trying to restrain you or anybody. I'm trying to keep this in some concise manner so that we, you know, when there's a, I'll speak to everyone. When there's a difference of opinion, and I recently had this in another setting, we could go on forever and nobody's going to budge. But nonetheless, I want everybody to have the right to speak, but not just without some kind of measures, a measured speech. So I ask for a general consensus. It's not a rule, Doug. Just a consensus for two remarks. So may I count this as your second one?
I'd rather not you do that because I'm just correcting the attorney. I need to correct you. I need you to correct him.
Well, I still ask that you take this as your opportunity for remarking too. Thank you.
Okay. It's my understanding, the court has only ruled on the injunction. They have not ruled on what you just said. Uh, you spoke incorrectly. Uh, that case is not over. And so the court has not ruled where that was correct or not.
The court has ruled and denied the granting of a temporary injunction. The issue of a permanent injunction is still before the court and the court.
So you spoke incorrectly?
No, I did not speak.
Yes, you did.
Just a minute, gentlemen, gentlemen, please.
I'm not gonna debate with you.
Because I can't hear, and I know if I can't hear, nobody else can hear. So let's allow the attorney to speak and then you have your last sec. Go ahead.
The court ruled on the issue of whether there's gonna be an issue, it's a temporary injunction, based on the petitioners, uh, filing the action with the court. Court heard evidence and based on the evidence denied the granting of a temporary injunction. And what the court said was, its interpretation of, of the charter did not disqualify the vice mayor from voting by assuming the duties of a mayor. The court ruled that. Now, that's on the granting of the temporary injunction, that the issue and the facts are gonna be the same at, uh, at the permanent injunction. The plaintiffs have taken no action to move that case forward. It's sitting there, no action is being taken by the plaintiffs to move it forward. When they do, it's gonna be the same issue before the court on a permanent injunction that it was on a temporary injunction.
Now, may I finish?
Uh, yes, this is your.
Okay.
Wrap up, may we say. Thank you, Doug.
I disagree with you. They only ruled on the injunction. They didn't rule on, the court did not rule on where she could vote or not. And I assure you, I've heard that even if the court does, it will be appealed. And i- if it's appealed, you can't vote on a change in the charter if something's on appeal by saying the court went with us on it, what you're trying to say. And if you look at the minutes before you got involved and the court got involved, just an injunction, and they didn't rule on whether it was right or wrong, Mary Ann Strong admitted before the me, of, in the meeting, in the minutes, which if we can show you the minutes, she did not have the right to vote.
That argument was presented to the court, but let me just.
No, I'll have my turn.
Regardless of the court's ruling, there's nothing to keep the council from amending the charter. Even if the court had ruled against the town in that case and said that Mary Ann Strong could not vote under the wording of the charter language at that time, there's nothing to keep the council from now amending to make it clear that she can.
Okay, follow. I appreciate that very much. And Doug, thank you. Mary Ann, you have something to say?
Yes. When we met that night in Rod's absence, unfortunately, due to his hospitalization, and Doug, I nominated you to be the vice mayor because you did have the longest tenure as the vice mayor and you coveted that role because I helped you become the vice mayor. It was something that you wanted very badly to be. So when we got in that situation and you denied it, just like Jeff said, because we, myself included, at that time, we'd never had that situation before because Mayor White, I don't believe she ever missed a meeting, ever. So the vice mayor had never had to run a meeting. So when we got put in that situation, I nominated you and because you thought you couldn't vote, you quickly turned it down. I'm not saying that I didn't say that I couldn't vote. At that time, we'd never had that situation. So I honestly did not know if I could or I couldn't vote. So we did adjourn and all I could do after that point, because somebody had to be the vice mayor, somebody had to step up. I think we would have sat here all night because if you couldn't vote, like Jeff keeps saying, who would wanna do that? So I took, I took the role, then had to depend upon the advice of the attorney. I didn't do any coercing. We just had to find out from the attorney, can I vote? Can I not vote? We meet again, advice was I can vote. So I'm gonna rely upon the advice of the attorney and that's why I voted. And I, I think, again, all this does is further clarifies what our attorney already had said and what the court ruled on the temporary injunction.
Thank you. Anything else, Mary Ann?
No, sir.
Any other members of council wish to comment on this proposed change?
Yeah, just real quick for me, um, pretty, pretty simple as far as I see it. It's just a clarity for me. Because we were in that situation, I think it's important to provide that clarity, not only to us, um, but to future members of council, why not provide the clarity of that? And what if they're in this same situation and we can provide this clarity? Um, I'll go with the attorney. He's practiced law a whole lot longer than me, so, um, I'm totally, totally fine with it.
Thank you. Anyone else have, any other members of council have something they wanna say?
The court ruled, reference to the lawsuit, they found that ruling on the original charter and it was repealed. But the current charter that we have now was, uh, 2013. So they, they ruled on that charter based on it being, um, in order on, and proper on its face, correct?
Correct, based on the language of the charter at that time.
Um, you've already have one court ruling on that and the order was granted, uh, that our charter was in place and was correct at the time and we did the proper thing. Just for clarification reasons, is that the only reason we're changing this piece of it, since we already have one ruling in our favor?
Well, you had the original language of the charter and there was a dispute as to what that language provided with regard to the vice mayor assuming the duties of the mayor. The vice mayor become the mayor and only vote in case of a tie, or she's just serving in the absence of the mayor and does not lose the vote. That was the issue based on the language of the charter at that time. Our advice was, the language of the charter provided, if not explicitly, implicitly, to allow the vice mayor to serve in the absence or disability of the mayor, and that vice mayor would not lose the vote. They could vote as a regular member of council. That was our advice. We gave that advice, you acted upon that advice. It was challenged by lawsuit in the court and the court ruled, consistent with our advice, that the vice mayor, assuming the role of mayor in his absence or disability, did not lose the right to vote. That was in the context, as, as Mr. Ratliff says, of the temporary injunction. That same issue is gonna come before the court on the final judgment. It's gonna be the same issue. I, I think it's probably gonna be the same facts.
But the only reason I'm bringing.
But this language clarifies it and makes it explicit. And so, and as I indicated, even if the court had ruled in favor of the petitioners and said the charter did not allow the vice mayor to vote in case of a tie because she became the mayor, you could still change your charter to change that. So even if the court had ruled against the town on that position, you could still clarify it, make it clear what the court has already ruled by putting this language in.
And what I was getting at to the point that was that the court ruled in favor based on the original wording of the charter.
Correct, Richard.
My question is, if we change this charter and then this case becomes an appellate court case, would the courts look at the original wording of the charter or would they look at what we have in place now?
Well, this proposed amended language would only go into effect at the time it was adopted.
Any proceeding.
Approved by the, it actually has to be approved by the general assembly.
But any proceeding that arose prior to that.
It's gonna be based on, that's correct.
Original charter was valid.
That's correct.
I follow your question. I would like to say thank you to Darryl Addison for coming tonight. I asked Darryl and he said there's been a legal, uh, ruling, whatever, that you can be here tonight. Darryl has not sworn in as a member of council, but he is here upon legal advice. Is that correct?
That's correct. He, he's been approved by the court, I understand. The order's been entered and approved. Uh, he's just waiting, uh, to take the oath of office, which I understand is set on Thursday.
I haven't heard of that yet.
Well, that's why Brad told me today, I would have worked.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I want to make sure, I, he may have something to say. I don't know. And that's not to put you on the spot, Darryl. I don't wanna be absolutely accurate. Is he allowed to speak during?
No votes are gonna be taken tonight on anything. It's just a work session. Uh, he has been approved by the court upon recommendation of the council. I think it's totally appropriate if he wants to make some comment. He can make it for what they're worth, uh, since there's no votes gonna be taken tonight in any event.
Thank you, Mr. Altizer. I appreciate, I wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing. Thank you. You have any comments? If you do, it's okay.
I'd like to learn more. Thank you. I know I can't say it anymore, but can I ask you a question?
Uh, if I can answer it.
Why would you ever wanna be mayor if you can't vote? Uh, I mean.
Well, Doug, I, I don't know how to answer that. To be serious about it.
I guess what I'm getting at is.
The power of the vote is so important. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm, I'm asking, I asked, why would you ever wanna be ma, uh, vice mayor if you couldn't vote? I'm asking you, which they're taking your place, why in the world would you ever wanna be mayor and not be able to vote?
Well, I will share this with you. Before I was elected to this council, before I became the mayor, I carefully read the charter. So I knew coming into this what my responsibilities were and my limitations. So I accepted those by the charter and so it wasn't anything I didn't expect or didn't that was surprise, surprised to me. So I accepted this with full knowledge of what my responsibilities were and what I was, or what I was not responsible.
Okay, I know you can't answer this, but in the same respect, when someone became the vice mayor, they know with full knowledge that they can't vote and it's been many, many years in the charter and everyone understood, but I know you can't answer that. That's my statement.
Okay.
I, I would like to make a comment.
Yes.
Doug, I think if you run for mayor, you're mayor. You know what you've got. If you run for council, you're council. Okay?
Right.
You run for council so you can vote. And if you run, if you vice, if you are vice mayor, you're giving that up. So I don't think I'd even wanna be vice mayor. I don't wanna give my vote up.
Well, the only time that you would give your vote up, Darryl, as vice mayor, is when you, you always have a vote as a vice mayor unless you take over the duties of the mayor.
That's what I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay, but if you took over the duties of mayor, then you know within full knowledge that you will not likely get to vote.
But if I'm a council member, why would I give up?
To run the meeting.
You didn't give it up.
I'd like to share.
You wouldn't give it up, right?
But, gentlemen. I would like to share something. Just a point of clarification. There's part of this proposal says, and this was something that we had wondered about, and I don't know if it was clear to me, but I think it's really a clarification, is that it's over in the beginning at 3.5, uh, it says, the mayor should preside over the meetings of the council. All right, it took, we're taking out, the proposal is to take out but is not a member thereof, uh, have the, and we've added, and have the same right to speak therein as a member and vote only in case of a tie or any matter before council, including ordinances and resolutions. The ordinances and resolutions require, uh, a two-thirds vote of the council. Yeah, that's right. So four out of six. And that was a question that we had before you were with us, Rob. And so that is a really important clarification to me, uh, on the role of the mayor. And that's my comment of this whole section right here. There was question about it and it came about because of rate, potential rate increases. That was in the summer of 2020, maybe. I don't hold me to that date because I've shared dates all day, but I think that's about right. So I think that to me is a very important clarification, what the mayor can vote on and what the mayor cannot, uh, in the language of, is not a member of the council thereof. I just think it's very important and I like that part. The other part I have, my comment to Doug was, uh, when I first ran for council, I thought I better read the charter and I'm no expert on it to this day at all, Doug. Uh, but I had read it and I knew what limitations could be for a member of council or, or a mayor or vice mayor. That's all I could tell you. Okay, uh, yes.
My, my second final comment would, would have been, um, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mary Ann, that vote was cast because we needed four, for the ordinance or resolution that we were trying to pass, correct?
Correct.
Are, are we changing anything in this piece of the charter? Or are we just allowing the vice mayor to act as a council member in the case of an ordinance or resolution? It may not be a tie, but you need four votes.
For an ordinance or resolution, that's the important part. That's right.
Yeah.
That's provision to change that.
I believe the, the question before was, it didn't have the ordinance and resolutions in there. The question was, you can only council vote because you have to have four votes of council.
That's right.
So by adding it in there, it clarifies that the mayor would be allowed to vote on resolutions and ordinances versus just members of council. That answered what you were.
It wa, it was or is in here, I don't know, about voting on ordinances and resolutions, that it is for members of council.
We, we had discussed all night about voting in ties, but it's not necessarily gonna be a tie when you need four members to pass that. And that was mine.
The, you know, the vice mayor at that point wouldn't have voted if it's not tied.
I was thinking, no, we were, we were only five in the seat.
At that time, there were only five members of council.
So a three, two vote would fail.
He stepped away, that's correct. That's correct. And we needed four votes to make the ordinance pass, even though we only have five members. I think that's what it calls for. So it can happen in the case of something besides a case of a tie.
Even with a five-member council, is that a call? Anyway, uh, is there further discussion amongst members of council regarding this? Or can we move on to the next, uh, suggested change, proposed change? Uh, let's see here.
I think the next two will be pretty quick. We can probably get through those.
He's looking for the.
He's got a funeral, he'll be back.
Is it what it is? Okay, I, I misunderstood. I thought it was, he's done planning commission too. Okay, okay, I'm fine. I just wanted to clear it out. Yeah, okay.
The next two items, you know, we can always rediscuss them. I believe, uh, the last time we discussed in council, it indicated that these were two changes that you weren't strongly in favor of. The first one is number three. It has to do with, um, changing some of the requirements for passing ordinances and the advertising requirement. This was also goes back to the lawsuit that was filed that has been discussed earlier. The charter has more restrictive requirements than the general statute, so, um, some of that put in there to help, you make that whole process a little smoother, but, you know, council, um, doesn't wanna make changes at this time. We can discuss that further. And then the last item was the residency.
I recall, John, uh, that we discussed item three and it's continued on the next page, page 14. And then we also discussed item four, which is the residency requirement for the manager. And as I recall, please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there was grave questions about changing this. Richard, I believe you had a point about it. I think council was hesitant to be forward with any changes at this time on the, on the charter or a fear of trying, any appearance of trying to circumvent the public. Richard, was that your general consensus of what happened? So, John, is that your general consensus?
That's what I recall, but since, you know, I'd make sure we're all on the same page that you still at this point, that nothing has changed on that.
On items number three and four, which are up here on the screen, so everybody can see it. So, members of council, any discussion on three and four?
Um, yeah, I have discussion. So, so.
So, for me, obviously, I'm speaking for myself, I think one and two provide more clarity and provide us with an opportunity to do better now and for in the future. And number three, I'll be honest, I don't know if it provides us the clarity or if it provides more confusion for me.
What do you mean, my?
Three, the ordinance one, in regards to changing, get to any two meetings, regular schedule, emergency requirement of the second reading has been first, and then getting into, you know, passing at the time separate council, the time of the passage. I just, I don't know if it provides us the clarity that we're searching for in order to change the charter. Maybe, maybe you can help me, Bob. Maybe, I don't, I just don't see the, I don't see the full benefit, if you can help me.
Well, I did propose this language.
Sure.
I don't know this as a clarity as actually maybe changing some of the procedure, the way you operate as council. Like in page 13, number three, you know, it provided no ordinance unless it's an emergency measure. And the council determines it's an emergency measure, shall be passed, and unless it's at two regular meetings, not less than seven days apart. That's the procedure you have to do. You had to, you had to, in order to pass an ordinance, you had to read it at two regular meetings that were seven days apart. Well, this language now, unless you determine it was an emergency measure, and then you could circumvent that process. What it provides for this language, it takes out the need to declare it an emergency measure. And it says, any ordinance now, no ordinance shall be passed until it is read at any two meetings, not two regular meetings. And it also takes out the requirement that they be seven days apart. So I don't think this is clarity. I just think this is a different way to approach how you're going to pass an ordinance. You want to pass it at, with a requirement that it be at two regular meetings that are seven days apart, or at two, any two meetings with no requirement that it be seven days apart. And you don't, and if you do that, you don't have to declare it an emergency to get around it. See what I'm saying?
The very language you use is what concerns me, to get around it. I don't...
Well, get around the requirement that it be two regular meetings, seven days apart. If it's an emergency, you can circumvent that requirement, but you have to declare from a devote that it's an emergency.
I appreciate that.
So...
It takes away the power of the people.
I just appreciate that, Bob. I just think personally, as the mayor, I think we should leave this alone.
May I speak?
I agree with you.
And the same thing on page 14, about when it, the ordinance or resolution goes into effect, and the charter previously, as currently provides, that it goes into effect 30 days after passage, unless you declare it's an emergency. But this is, when you pass it, you can determine when it goes into effect. It's not 30 days after passage. It's when you pass it, you can decide when it goes into effect, immediately, 30 days or some other point.
And that's, and that's not, so where did the 30 days come from? Is that something that we've, that we've just established in the past?
That's what was in your charter.
In the charter. But, and that's different than Virginia law.
That's correct.
So if we're going to change anything, it should be that, not necessarily changing procedure, but...
Well...
Lining up with an accordance of Virginia law. Right? Is that what you're saying?
You get to the same end. If you have an ordinance that needs to go into effect right away, under the old language, it goes into effect 30 days unless you determine by two-thirds vote, it's an emergency measure and you can go into effect sooner than that. Okay? That's what your charter currently provides. This amendment, as proposed, you don't need to determine it's an emergency. You just, at the time you pass it, you decide when you want it to go into effect.
Sure. So what you're basically saying is this is just clerical procedure in regards to when stuff happens.
It's how the council conducts its business.
Right.
It provided one way...
When it's going to happen.
And this is an alternative way that may or may not be. It's a policy decision, not a legal decision, of whether, whichever way you think is the most efficient way to conduct the business of the council.
Right. As far as being published, I'm speaking, that's just...
Pardon my...
Part of the, I'm talking, I'm still talking about the published part, where you decide when it should be adopted. That's just, that makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense.
Answer your question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, absolutely.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Just for the, for the whole council, for me, the charter is the people's charter. And we're vested, I guess, with the ability, based on the people voting for us, to do what's right by the charter. So I'm going to make a recommendation, and I know we can't vote on anything, like, is we pair these amendments to this charter down and put it on referendum in the election in November and let the people vote? Is that something that's...
That too.
Give a vote on the amendments to the charter?
I'd have to check, I'm not sure that is provided by statute. That's something I'd have to look at, Richard.
And I know there's certain, certain things can be...
There are state requirements about amending your charter. And I would need to look to those. I don't want to speak off the top of my head on that.
I mean, that's going to be my choice if, if it's available.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Richard. Any changes to the charter is a big deal to me. And it is the people's charter. You spoke correctly. And if it's allowed by law, I agree with you that it should be voted on by the public.
Gentlemen and ladies, it is, according to my watch, it's five minutes till seven. Do you concur with the time, since our town clock is incorrect?
We have a funding thing. We're going to buy a battery.
Well, if we can't be funny, but in all seriousness, I'll recess this meeting until the planning commission has been in this room for their public hearing, and we can sit back here and they may take these seats. Thank you.
Is that the reason we're turning around here?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think we should take these documents. I really do. We can tell Richard to take these copies here.
Yeah, we can tell Richard we're going to have this in here.
And we sit up there.
Yeah, we can sit back here, wherever you want to sit, but I don't want to sit up here. I'm going to sit back here with the people. Just me.
Listen somewhere, do it.
Thank you. Okay.
Carols.
Carols. I think they think they're in there. Barry.
Yeah. They, well, I suggested to be out here. It's a public hearing.
Yeah.
That's not too public.
Yeah, yeah, I saw him go in there.
I'll go tell them.
Hey, Barry. Hey, Barry. Y'all come in here. All of you.
I have to get moving a little bit. Oh, no.
Yes.
So if you see her. How you doing?
Yeah, I'm doing okay. Anybody else?
We'd like to call the meeting to order for the public hearing in application for a zoning permit application by Gerald Collins for Bad Axory LLC. Public hearing is called because of an application for a conditional use permit because this is a public entertainment venue, a public amusement venue. So all parties wishing to speak in this matter, let yourself know. What's your name, sir?
Gerald Collins.
Gerald Collins.
Yeah, let me go to the mic.
Please.
Ain't I the only one? We can hear you pretty good. Just speak up a little bit.
I'm Gerald Collins. And my wife is the one that's putting that in. And we just wanted to bring something to the community, something fun, family friendly, have some ax throwing, the milkshakes, a couple batting cages for the kids, softball and baseball. So y'all have any questions, want to know anything about it, I'm here.
Do you, have you, just for full disclosure, have you had in mind the hours of operation, days of the week of operation?
Yes, I've already got them kind of a base made up of what I like to try to start with. So I was going to open at 11:00 a.m. and close on weekdays at 7:00 p.m. And Friday and Saturday nights, open the same time, but close at 9:00 p.m. The only other time would be like if we was able to have like a New Year's Eve night or something.
Anyone have any questions?
No alcohol this time will be served, right?
No.
It's the milkshake venue, kind of like Get Fancy in Lebanon?
The same thing, yeah. I own part of it with my sister.
Right.
Yeah, so we're just putting it in there too, same part.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any discussion? Michelle, any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Or concerns? Pros and cons?
I think it's something that Craig Earl's reliving with. Thank you for bringing this in. Our kids need something to go to and adult because I think I probably would enjoy maybe me and Jeff.
You realize you don't vote in each other's eyes?
You know, we always complain about not having.
Well, I voted for it. I thought we could throw it at each other.
I think this is a very great business for our area and something that can be entertaining. I hope that you approve it.
Anyone else? Smaller?
My name is Laura Mala. I live at 262 Linnwood Drive, and I agree with Mr. Earl. So I think any legal business coming into Ridge Lands should be welcomed with open arms. I think it's going to be great for the kids, going to be great for something to do. A lot of people outside of the area have picked up on this as a pastime, and we don't have, I think, the closest one to us is like Coburn and Johnson City. See, we're going to attract Tasmol and Lebanon people into Ridge Lands because we're finally getting the jump on something that nobody else has in the area. So I do hope you guys will approve it.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I was just going to say for once, I agree with Laura. When you look at a vibrant downtown, this is one amenity that's going to, not just bring people here, but keep people here. So when you look at, you know, people coming from Life Race that Derek and Maria organized, they didn't have a lot to do when they were here, but now they will. So I would urge you guys to please.
And the approval of the, just so everyone understands, we make a recommendation to the council, and council still approves the permit. So our recommendation would be to council to just make sure everybody understands that.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann?
I just wanted to say again, I'm very supportive of the new business, and like Blake said, it gives, and Laura said, opportunities for other people to do something different. And as Craig would say, we will be having the state league tournament in 2022, and I'm sure those kids are going to love that to come down to your place. And the final thing I'll say, which I think is also very, very important, is developing that end of town. Appreciate the White family because I know they're the landlord, and so it will complement other businesses on that end of town that needs development.
Someone else?
Oh, yes.
As the mayor, I want to speak, as I said, thank you very much, and I want to share with you, I have thrown axes. I wasn't very good at it, so if you stand behind me, very careful.
Yes, sir.
As a young man who's lived in this town his whole life, I'm used to being bored, so it'd be nice to have a change.
Okay. Anyone else? I'd like to say as well, I'm excited that, as Mary Ann stated, that the property's being developed, and we don't have an empty building sitting on foot. And a lot of work looks like to me has already been done there, which has improved the aesthetic of that end of town already. So personally, I'm excited about the new business coming to town, so. Do we hear a motion to recommend to council the approval of the conditional use permit zoning permit application?
I'll make a motion to approve or to recommend the approval of their permit.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor saying a five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we will be recommending to council the approval of the municipal use permit.
December 14th, I think it means, all right.
December 14th meeting. Is there any other business? This meeting's adjourned.
We were only three people.
What do you think about your hair there, Bobby? What do you think about your hair? Your football coach hair. Hair.
Well, I don't know much about him.
Right. He's all right.
Safe?
Oh, it was safe. Not splashy, we wanted. There's not good, those two teams? Those are two bad, it's fun game. It's just two bad teams, weren't they? We're doing good. Are we?
If we declare a competitive game.
Always get, I just get so mad because these two teams can be, they both be good enough, and it just drives me crazy whether or not.
On that side of the conference, there's no excuse.
I think Richard might have used your gavel better.
Second ago? Richard Brown? Sorry, Richard.
When you average 48 points.
Sorry.
Defense averages 64.
Every year, you still lose one six and it doesn't matter.
You know, this guy.
I think council, all get together, and go throw axes.
What was it? Okay.
And you know who his high school coach was?
Or Dennis Follin?
Brian Stansbury.
Stansbury, okay.
Team building.
You know who else coached there at Lexington? Dennis Follin? That's where they all came in. Won a state championship there, I think.
Looking for a coaching job. Stansbury.
Oh, yeah, okay. That all works, that's all.
And it's really funny because J.C. Pla, who was a senior.
Yeah, on that team.
Anyway, he came in as a graduate.
Oh, okay.
So there's a bunch of connections.
That's easiest thing.
Started asking, what's wrong with this hair?
Also, man, it got real personal, like.
Really?
Yeah.
Talk about ARPA now.
I want to get consensus on this so I can have something to, as the file, and then for the public hearing.
This work session is now reconvened. We want to thank the planning commission for their diligent work. Okay, when we left off to allow them the space that they did need, we were talking about charter changes, and we have, we're discussing sections three and four, and we'll get explanations on all these points. So just going to be very quickly to section three, is there anyone who would like to, any other discussion on section three?
I say we, I say we, I say we just take out three and four and.
Leave them as they are?
Continue.
There is a consensus, we cannot take a vote. Anybody else want to add their comments here before we move on?
I agree with Mike.
All right, so the consensus is for the manager would give you direction to make proposed adjustments to one and two, and leave three and four as they are. Is that the consensus of the council?
Oh, is that the statement? I'm sorry.
It's a consensus.
Just got Andy now, he's.
I'm sorry.
I'll take the one right in front of you. I like this better than these.
I'm starting to like.
Jeff's got some pull here.
I brought those to him, so trying to swing them up.
Okay, so in all seriousness, we had proposals for one, they're labeled if you're wanting to, do you mind to go back to them, John, so everybody can see, members of council, members of the audience? Okay, this is a proposal regarding in general term limits, and the next one is two, which is a proposal for the mayor and vice mayor. And then number three and four, as I understand it, there's a consensus to ask the town manager not to, anything with three and four, to leave them as they are now in the charter, and to revise sections one and two as council has suggested for legal, our legal council to review, and then in January, we will have a public hearing on this. Is that correct? Want to make sure I'm understanding what the direction is. Is that correct?
If I may add, if you can do some research, one of the citizens brought up there is that we can put it on a referendum, it's not binding, but it's an advisory, or that, could you look that up to make sure that's legal?
Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree, I agree with Richard. I think if we could do that, I think it'd be better.
If a referendum is allowable, and that's what he's.
Because that would let the public.
Decide, and that is what he was just.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so if we have finished with the charter, proposed charter changes, we'll go to the next part.
We're moving forward with one and two. If we can do it as a, out of a referendum on the, in the November election, we'll go that route. If not, we'll move forward with one and two with a public hearing.
Well, maybe we'll, I think that's right, maybe check with the council. John, may I clarify what I'm hearing? If, if it is possible to have a referendum on the charter changes, we would know that in December, is that what you're thinking, Mr. Altizer?
That we should be able to advise you.
I would think that before we make that pronouncement, we just will find out to see if it's, if it's possible, and if not, we'll know that in December, we could decide that at the December meeting, does this make sense? And then in December, if we need to go forward with a public hearing in January, then we can do that, but I don't know, we should go further than that right now.
But the consensus is drop three and four and just keep one and two?
Council? Yeah. Drop three and four.
I think what Doug is speaking about is an advisory referendum that would put it on the ballot just to give the council a feeling of what direction as to what the public wants. It's not binding, the council could still make the charter changes, but it'd be for or against the way the public felt.
Right, exactly.
And then it would still have to go through the general assembly?
Yes.
So what kind of timetable would we be looking at?
It's talking over a year from now.
Have to look at costs as well. Should have probably some costs associated if we add it to a ballot. Might have to call.
I really don't know, Mike. It's a good question.
I think Mr. Altizer will probably find all those particulars out for us.
I mean, just from, I don't think it's going to add any cost, just adding a sentence to be voted on, on the ballot. I don't think that would add any cost, that's just my feeling.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, who knows?
Okay, shall we proceed from charter changes, council? All right, the next item on the agenda is item, my name is number five, ARPA funding discussion. So John, would you like to pass out some material for council to review, please?
I like it, I like the color too.
I prefer blue. That's big piece of paper.
Who is this from?
I made it.
Okay, I, make sure everybody has before you these proposals on ARPA funding, and then the ensuing discussion. So at this time, I will ask the town manager to take it from here, probably take it from the top, John.
All right, so I'll start at the top, and we'll highlight the items in yellows are items that we've already essentially committed to, or are projects that we have made up for funding at this time. The first one's the water and the wastewater plant upgrades. Based on our last discussion on TNL, they estimated those costs could come in at 20% to 30% higher, so that's where the 4.1 million is, just to account for any overages. We hope to have at least the first project out to bid sometime around the first of the year, and then as soon as we get bids in, we'll really know what percentage we're looking at. We're hoping that it's going to be better than the worst case scenario, but until we get those bids in, we're not going to know for sure. So if they come in lower, then it'll free up additional funds for some of these other items. The second one's the downtown revitalization grant. This is the one that Connie worked on, now Ashley's working on that. We took the part where we applied for funding, we hope to be able to secure a architect slash design firm with the grant funding that we hope to receive shortly, and then as that process is completed, the buildings are selected, then we will apply for a grant for a million dollars, we'll have to come up with our match. Right now, we anticipate about $500,000, $600,000 of that match coming from the businesses where they get a one-for-one match on the repairs and improvements they did to their buildings. So at that point, we anticipate the town's cost to be 400,000 to 500,000. So I have 475,000 in there at this point, based on, if that grant moves forward, as we hope it will.
John, a quick question to make sure that I understand it, and I guess everybody else too. Staff on downtown revitalization staff estimate is 500,000, and then the recommended is 475?
Correct.
I missed the part you were saying.
We dropped it down just to try to stretch every dollar into as many different items as we could. It really depends on how many businesses participate and how much either property owners are willing to spend on their building, and we really won't know that number until we get, you know, a lot of ways down the road, and they're, you say, I'm going to do this repair, and it's going to cost this amount, I'm going to pay. But that's, we're hoping at least, you know, $500,000 with participation, we're really hoping it's more, but until we get to that point, we won't know for sure.
Not to belabor this, but do you mind to read what's in that little one-time cost thing so everybody can understand it, please? Thanks, John.
Okay, on the first one, it says based on project increases received from TNL, that's for the water and the waste treatment plant upgrades. The second one for the downtown revitalization says, you know, $1 million grant requiring a million dollar match from property owners in the town. Our part will depend on participation, but we hope this is closer to $400,000 from the town side.
Okay, to help, to help council with that, where that number comes from, this is a, this is a joint participation grant where both the town and the property owners can both contribute and match. So the reason ours is that is because we're hoping that, and based on what we know so far, potentially, there will be close in between $500,000 and $600,000 of participation from property owners to take care of the facades and the outsides of the buildings on, you know, within the scope of the project that's yet to be taken care of. So what's left there is going to be what our participation as a town's going to be to take care of sidewalks, streetscape, lighting, to make it as beautiful as it possibly can. We get dollar-for-dollar match on all that up to $1 million if we're given the grant, of course. So that's our participation in our, what we believe would be what we would need in order to, you don't want to give away free money, that's the biggest thing, you know, here. If they're going to match you dollar-for-dollar to a million dollars, you should always take advantage of it. So that's where that, that number comes from. The 475,000, that's what's left over, what property owners won't use.
Won't use.
Won't use.
Okay.
May I say something? I mean, that's, that's all in good, but have you caught, I've had a lot of property owners contact me, and they've never been contacted, never been asked a question, never been asked to participate.
We're not to that point yet. We've got to get our stuff prepared so we can get the grant funding in place, and then we'll reach out, because we don't want to reach out and promise them this opportunity if it's not in place yet. So we're trying to get our plan and our, everything lined up before we start reaching out to property owners.
Why was a, I'm not being, you know, why was there a map? And it's already been.
That's from a couple of years ago.
It was voted on two, two, three months ago.
There's no, there's no vote for anything, though.
I know one or two people were there, and they said it was voted on and blacked out two, three months ago. I'm not, you know, that's fine, if you're going to reach out to everybody, but you should reach out to every.
It'll be based on the consultant and DHCD, which areas they tell us to focus on.
But the map, if it was several, I mean, one of the blighted areas was the Huddle House. It's not been there that long, and I don't see how you can have the Huddle House as a blighted area and skip hype the other town.
That map will be redone, so the map that you're referring to isn't, you know, what we're, going off, the consultant will come in and they'll look at the past information and then reevaluate.
All I ask is you contact every property owner and you give them a chance, because I've had a lot of people contact me, and they knew nothing about it, knew nothing about the grant, and yet they already mapped it out two, three months ago, and it was passed around, who was on it, who was not? That was, you know, okay.
So that, that map was used as a guide to show what, where the properties are, and that map could have very well had Huddle House as a blighted property if it was from, you know, that, that long ago, because that's a new property. Should it be included in this one? No, I don't think so. I agree with you.
It's a very old map.
We'll make sure that all that's updated, and the consultant that we're, like mentioned in my last report, we've applied for a planning grant so that we can have the money to pay for a consultant that will tell us what properties need to be included and what don't. So that consultant will be reaching out and talking to the different property owners to say, okay, would you like to commit, and would you like to be part of this? And, and we'll be left out of it until we get to the point where we're actually, you know, putting money forth, right, to be between the consultant and that, because there will be restrictions, this is money they're giving you, so there will be tons of restrictions, truthfully, on how we want it to look and the vision of it, a lot of it will have to look similar, things like that, so we'll be a different map, for sure.
Any other comments? Any other items you want to talk about regarding the downtown revitalization grant, John?
John, I understand you're right, landowners have to, building owners have to put a match.
Right, so they're, if they have a building, they're going to put a $40,000 facade on it, we would be able to give them 20, they'd have to put 20 of their own money into, into the upgrades.
No.
Okay.
Are we already doing these line by line in special?
Is there any way we can get copies? I don't know about anybody else, but I'm having.
I would think we could provide copies. Is that possible, John?
Yeah, Heather, can you make those? Do you have a copy?
Do you have it? Email?
Yeah. Frank, can you forward it to her? Or? I emailed it to you, it's the two files that we did.
Yeah.
Or, you can send my, you can send my copy.
I've got a copy, yeah, this was, like, it'd be easier to make copies. I can't really copy it, like, on this.
All right, I sent it to you.
Thank you, Heather. I would suggest maybe. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, it doesn't copy sets, what I see. Thank you very much. Well, we'll move on, everybody get copies.
I had thought.
Yes, go ahead.
That John was going to read through these, then we were going to discuss them. I didn't realize we were discussing my item.
Whatever way council wishes.
Number one, with the upgrade.
Okay, let's go back to it.
All right. Just my opinion on this, and I may be wrong, because I'm not the business-minded as several of you are, but we're never going to get this chunk of money given to us again. And to me, I don't think that the public would see.
Benefit.
The benefit from the $4 million. And I do realize it's under budget. I do realize the cost of construction, everything's went up. But my opinion on that portion of it, I think some of it needs to go where people can actually see where we're spending their money at, whether it's the splash pad, the revitalization of the elaborate, whatever it is. I'd like to revisit that at some point before we, because, you know, I don't know that we'll ever have $2 million to build a splash pad or build a soccer field or build a.
Richard, I understand what you're saying. I will say, I hope we never have this opportunity again because of COVID.
Exactly.
But we don't know, but I get what you're saying. So I would suggest, at Richard's request, that we can revisit this. My question following that is, John, I suppose there are obviously regulations that go with what, how you use this money. And is there a date that we have to use this by a deadline?
I believe we have about two to three years. I'm not.
I couldn't remember. I think you actually said it the last time. Can you find out, not tonight, but exact, whenever, an exact time set at say two to three, so we'll know? Does that make sense to you? What is the deadline?
But at least it helps us to know it's not one year.
Yeah, right.
And we can be extremely thoughtful.
That's exactly.
With how we spend it in the wisest way.
So we don't jump to any conclusions or do something that we regret as a government body. But if you can get the exact time.
And I know that if you look at the items that are in green, those are items that we would most likely move forward with relatively quickly because of the grant timelines or the current budget process and the things. So the green ones are the ones that we would move forward with probably in the next, you know, six months. And that money would be committed relatively quickly. The other ones, we can kind of hold off on and kind of see how the water would pan out and see really where they were or.
Question. Thank you. And for those of you who can't see it too clearly, right here, you'll get a copy. The green of these little dots right here in column two, I guess you call it, and highlighted there, John, I'm reading right, green space, phase two. Is A C P, is that what I'm getting?
Yes, because we've received the $50,000 grant. So as soon as we finish phase one, we'll.
And then a library. Is that added from the last time?
I think it was, I don't think so. I think it's been on there, but it may have been.
I don't remember.
At that time, we may not have had a final, well, I think it's been on there for a while. And that's one that, you know, we've received some grant funding that we either have to ask for an extension in the next month or so or spend it. So, you know, we, you know, that money, if we're going to move forward, we need to spend it relatively quickly.
And then next is SSES grant funding. You might explain what that means.
That's a grant that we're working with TNL right now. We've received 75,000 from DEQ and 25,000 from Cumberland Plateau, essentially to map and do an assessment of our sewer and water system. So, you know, the extra money there is, we had to rent some flow meters to see how bad our ionized, so when it rains, how much water seeps into our wastewater treatment system. So then it goes to the plant and trying to catch areas that are worse than others, as well as renting a camera or buying a camera. So we're working out some of the details on how we can get the most benefit out of that. And hopefully, we're going to be able to do it without having to spend the additional money. But there's some requirements. We're trying to find ways to get around so that we can, you get the most money for our buck. So if it works out the way we hope it will, that'll free up that $20,000. Won't have to be spent on that. But until we, you know, another month or so, we won't know for sure exactly how we're going to work that out.
Okay. In line eight.
That's the body worn cameras for the police department. In this year's budget, we budgeted money for new tasers. When we discussed it with the taser company, they gave us an option for body worn cameras, which is something that feels pretty important to have, especially today's climate with our officers protecting, you know, not only them, but if there's a complaint from a citizen, we can review that and make sure that everything was followed properly. But if we do that, based on what we budgeted this year, and just continue that same amount over the next four years, because it's a five-year agreement for maintenance and insurance and all that on those devices, it'd be about $9,000 short. So instead of spending the 50 or $100,000 from ARPA money, we could just spend 9,000 to supplement that and then spend the same amount that we budgeted this year just for tasers over the next five, your next four years, including the top, including this one, to get tasers and body worn cameras from the same company.
Richard, not to jump ahead of what you're wanting to do, but he talked about the green parts. I just asked for a real synopsis of that.
And what I was going to suggest, and it's completely up to the council, those four items are relatively important as far as the timeline. I'm sure we're going to be in many, many multiple talks, budget theory and everything else. Can we just look at those four items tonight, get a consensus on those and talk about the rest of it? Because we could, we could be here till midnight, talking about stuff that we can't decide. But these four items are compared, and I'm not diminishing Mr. O'Daniel's work that he's done on this, but we can't make a decision on anything. But he's saying that these four items are important.
That's what I'm reading. It's in green, which means go.
It's the hope was to get at least a consensus that these are the 10 items we would like to do. So then we can do, you know, have public comment at the next meeting and then council kind of officially approve. This is our game plan. But, you know, we'd only move forward with maybe those first four items and then hold off on the other one to kind of see where things come in. Then we come back for further discussion of if it comes in under or if it comes in over.
Further discussion on the items that are.
So like if council said, we want to do the top nine items, then we could consensus, we do a public hearing so the public actually knows what items we're considering as a proposal that could give their public comment. And then council could, you know, kind of approve those as the items we'd like to do. But we'd really hold off besides those top four. And then reassess depending on how some of the information that comes in.
Could we, why we're considering these four, could I make some suggestions on how we could help the budget and to spend some of them?
If you relate to this, budget is one thing, and ARPA is a.
Well, I mean, the money, yeah.
On what to do with ARPA money?
Right.
Sure.
Okay. If you want to help the budget, I mean, this is all in good, but if you really want to help the budget going forward, why don't you pay off the VRS debt, which would save the, count a lot of money going forward and help the budget? Though, one thing that Richard, I think we need to do too, that he suggested, is not only pay off the VRS, which would help the budget going forward, but pay for the LEOS for the first responders. The next thing that you could do is pay off for the fire truck. That's costing us $80,000 a year. If we got rid of that, I mean, pay some existing bills for the county with this money. And that would help the budget. There's a lot of proposals in this, but we need a new fire station. I mean, the fire station's about to fall down. We've got a new truck and it won't fit in, and the roof's about to come off. We need, we need a lot of things, more than I think we need these suggestions. We need a new fire station. We need a new police station. We spend, on the average, half a million dollars on the rec center. Why couldn't we build a new police station and use the existing police station for a community center for the rest of the public, to get them involved and bring them downtown? And we could even buy the old Magic Mart and make that a whole complex with a small amount of money and use this to help our citizens to build the downtown. We've got issues like flooding in Hidden Valley. We've got flooding on Henderson Street, flooding in downtown. We've got flooding on Orange Street. It's not even mentioned hardly in this. We need probably to upgrade the police force as far as radios and repeaters. If we spend $150,000 for them to upgrade their radios and repeaters, that would all ride in line with 911. And of course, the library, that's a good project. We.
Well, I was thinking on the lines with Doug, too. You know, I know we've talked about that property acquisition over Iron Street or, you know, that way, and what an opportunity we could have if we can move all this stuff down here to Fifth Street, build a facility for a town or a street crew, whatever, you know, over there.
And get rid of the ice.
Well, do that. And then, like I said, develop it down there with that community center, you know, that possible park or.
I mean, that's a great, I mean.
For rec down there.
I guess what I'm saying, let's do things, get the biggest bang for a buck, Jeff, and do all this to change all of town. And if we run into a problem with the sewer plant, just for me and something, if we spend it on this, then we can always get a grant or a loan to finish that off.
That's I'm listening, and I think these are good ideas. My question to follow up with, anyone's thinking here, John, I'm sure this money comes with some restrictions. I don't know what they are. Are you able to retrieve those, not tonight, but forward that to members of council and myself so we know what, how to understand that?
The requirements we.
We'll have to have legal counsel for this too, whatever we do, because most money that is given to you has some kind of restrictions or specified uses for it. And I don't know all the things that all of us want are covered under those specifications.
The direction we've received is pretty vague. So whatever, you know, items we want, I was going to try to get some clarification to make sure those are eligible items. You know, we haven't gotten a really detailed explanation. It's like they sent out the money and now we're trying to figure out, you know, all the exceptions and what is eligible. I know, like, you know, body worn camera, we received some information from them that they received straight from the federal government, says that. Or whoever's, you know, head manager said that, you know, that's an eligible expense. You know, I know that several others are doing recreation, but whatever we would decide on, you know, we would work to try to make sure we get a clarification that yes, those items are good to go. I know that infrastructure is one of the big ones that was included as an item that, you know, wouldn't have really any hesitation to spend money on infrastructure.
Well, just like Richard, when, you know, that's just a lot of money. You know, like, the soccer project doesn't feel as important if we're going to spend that much money, but we have other issues.
I agree.
By the way, you know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, you know, I'm still going to apply for that half a million dollar grant. I think that'd be a good thing. But still, I wouldn't want to take away from spending that much money on the water treatment plant. I don't want to take away that much money to be spent on the project.
The water and wastewater plant, you know, concern is, you know, if we don't, we set that money aside for the overages, it's going to result in higher utility rates. And we've got, you know, a schedule right now where I think it's three years that we've set what the rates are going to go up for the next three years to, you know, meet the requirements per the loans and funding we've received for those projects based on that initial estimate. So if it goes above that, then in two to three years, you know, we can spend it on things that people would see. But then we're going to be in here having that tough discussion on going up on rates again after we did it for the last three to four years. But, you know, that's something that this group has to take into account and decide what you feel is the best way to spend that money.
I guess my argument with it, maybe the last thing I'd say about, is if, you know, if I drive by a soccer field, I know that the town's ARPA money funded it. If I drive by a new police station or a new fire station, I know that that money's spent from the town's ARPA money. I don't know that people, the citizens would see 4.1 million spent on upgrades to a water plant that we were already upgrading. It's just over. That's, I want people to be able to see what we did with the money. That's.
I understand.
If I may add to that, we've got how many years that we're upgrading? I mean, it's time to look for a grant for that. And I'm sure there are many grants out there to upgrade a sewer plant.
The only grant I know at this point, because, you know, we got the low interest loans, they dealt that before I got here, is some of the federal money as, you know, that may be coming down for infrastructure that, but, you know, until, so we hope that when we're shovel ready, then we might be able to get some of that funding. And then that funding would free up this money for something else. But, you know, I don't want to guarantee it or count on it, but.
What's the timeline for wastewater treatment plant stuff?
I can get you updated timeline. I don't.
That's years, though. I mean, the upgrade, as far as.
We'll put it out for, I think we'll put the water and wastewater plant out for the next two to three months, hopefully.
Let me ask you this. How much, you were going to check on the VRS, how much we owe?
How much is it?
6.7, 6.8 million?
Pardon?
6.8.
Pardon?
6.8.
7.8?
Whoa.
How much?
That's one I don't know if we could use the ARPA money. We'd have to find out.
I did check on that. The thing is, you can't go back in something that we've already done. It has to be something like moving forward, like it would, or since 2019, basically.
So we couldn't pay that off?
And it's really, the thing is with that, like, it's just really, I don't know, it's already set up for a 30-year, it was set up for a 30-year thing.
How much interest does that cost?
I don't know if it says. It's not a whole lot because you're kind of essentially like paying it back, if that makes sense.
I mean, what, $500,000?
Um, let's see.
I think the interest, if I remember from 2010, I think what she's referring to is that it's basically.
You're just basically free.
Like a 401K loan. You're paying that back to your VRS account, not individual accounts, but the town.
Right.
Oh, I know. But it's still costing the town pretty much.
Apple's orange, I guess you could say, because it's going right back into the VRS.
I mean, it's got to be costing four, 500. And I know we can't pay it all off, but what about the fire truck? I mean, that would save the $80,000. I mean, that would help the budget and we would accumulate that money to help us with, you know, doing stuff like that, pay off debt.
It's ineligible. We have to find out.
Well, I mean, they're very loose. The last money that came out, it's very vague, it's very vague because it's loose. Lebanon built a sports complex, I believe with theirs. I mean.
It was something new. Like, when it's something old, usually they don't like to pay for something you'd already bought and were paying, you know. If it's a new project, you might be able to work around. But that's something we'd have to reach out to somebody and try to get some clarification, which maybe.
Like a, like a new fire station that's fallen down that we have, that would be a permissible.
I think that would be a closer. Infrastructure.
Actually, what it actually says is basically from when it started. So I would now would assume they were going to be going back to 2019, you know. And it goes, I think right now, it's the 2024, a visible timeframe.
Okay, I understand. I'm with Richard. I mean, we will find the money for the sewer, I assure you. Citizens want to see things done with this money and do things like a community center. They want to see things like a new community center, like at the police station. They want to see these flooding issues taken care of, especially in the middle of town. I mean, help the police force with new radios and stuff like that.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. I think your ideas are splendid. Maybe you write them down.
I got them.
He's got it.
Present it to the manager, because I'm losing track. It's not your mind, it's mine. But I just can't keep up with it. And I'm not being critical. I just can't follow all that.
Well, sort of like what he said, you know, like I said, maybe we have some type of priority, you know, all right, here's, here's A section, here's B section, or C section. Then let's see what we want and start to try to.
Why don't we have a committee made up of the community of business leaders and citizens and let them help the council choose the priorities? It shouldn't be council who's choosing all these. Let the community have a say in what we do with this money. And like Richard says, if they have a say in it, there's no going, there's no, oh, you should have done that, you should have done that. I mean, give them, this is a one time in a lifetime. oh, you should have done that, you should have done that. I mean, give them, this is a one time in a lifetime, like Richard, I believe Richard said that. And it's true. And for once in council's lifetime, bring the citizens in to work with the council and maybe four or five citizens or ten to work and say, this is our priority. We want to see this, this and that. And not just put it on the shoulders of us to have to say, why have we done this?
Okay.
Okay? That's my suggestion.
I'm taking it in. And I don't need to slight you at all, but sometimes I lose track. We give you too many things and I just cancel it. It's my fault.
I know, I talk a lot of.
That's usually about hours for you to counsel. Just spin it in your head.
Okay. I know, it's me.
Could we have a consensus maybe through bring the?
If you want, if members of council want to entertain that as a thought.
Would enter, would council entertain a thought that we use a committee of, made up of the, uh, citizens to help council choose the priorities that they think we should spend this money on? And it would, it would help the councils or the citizens view of the council if they had a part in it.
Let each council member maybe.
Yeah.
Choose a couple of people or something.
Sure, yeah. I mean, that's a great idea.
I'd be fine with that. I think it's. I think we need to, I'm, I'm with that, because that's what's council wants to do. I think before we start picking people that we need to give real personal thought.
I agree. I don't think we should rush. I'm not against it.
Right. Our town manager needs to find that out.
Even.
But I think we need to be considered, invited, considered.
I want to know the parameters of what we're doing, of what we're, what we can do, which is, but I know you said it's kind of vague. And sometimes these things, uh, my experience, limited experience has been it can be. We don't want to wrangle anything around. We want it to be upfront and what it is. And I would appreciate, before we get too much further, your sharing with us what information you have, John, as to what the limitations of this are in the town.
Hey, may I?
Thanks, too.
May I?
He'll send everybody an email. I appreciate it.
May I add one more thing?
One thing. Because I can't go too many times.
Okay.
You're on three point five.
Okay. No matter what we choose and what the limitations are, it has no bearing on should the uh, citizens ha- take part in it. It doesn't matter. I mean, I think Jeff had a wonderful suggestion, no matter what the stipulations are.
I agree with that. There's no question on my part. Now, what I'm talking is, we, you know, we start proposing, not you, but you and plural, tons of ideas. All of a sudden, we're outside the parameter of what we might be able to do. And I don't want anybody to get their hopes up and it's not within the scope of what this money can be used for. So that's where I'm headed, but I totally am getting you on that. So may I suggest, uh, to get us back on track or try to that let's consider these, uh, as Richard was saying, these that are marked in green, three, four, five and eight, which is the green waste space phase number two, a staff estimate is seventy five thousand, recommended is twenty five thousand. Over here it says a fifty thousand dollar grant with a twenty two thousand town cost. That's for the green space phase two. All right, do you understand that? Next, library, I'm just moving on. Library. Staff estimate is a hundred ninety nine thousand, recommended a hundred fifty four thousand, plus the money that we've been uh, promised, whatever, in grants. Was it Thompson Charitable and who else gave us that? Travis Hackworth as the board of supervisors man, right? All right, and forty five thousand in grants. That's what that was, was one of the grant comes from Thompson Charitable Foundation. Travis's money is, uh, from his fund, I do believe. Is that right? So let's clarify that is not grant, okay? Do you follow what I'm saying? All right, uh, one fifty four in ARPA money, Thompson letting, uh, rev, I don't know what that means, revi- revised and felt the bid was reasonable, can cut seven thousand without an architectural plan and rebid, all right? That's for the library. And I haven't seen the plans and I'm not on the library board, but I think you were saying, obviously, the first time it was mentioned, we were far off what it was proposed to be for all these additions to, which included an elevator in the back and all these things. Is that right, John? Plus the siding and the windows and whatever. Is that right in general?
I think it's more of the siding than the windows that we had.
Not the addition at the back that I keep hearing about? Okay, just the siding, uh, putting new wood on there, whatever it is that's appropriate, windows, et cetera. That staff estimate is one ninety nine for that?
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear, because there is so much talk for the library and I, everybody, nobody would refute a library. It'd be against God and country and we can't do that. So that being said, uh, we should consider this, okay? Next, uh, going to hear for the SSES grant funding, twenty thousand estimate, twenty thousand recommended. Received seventy five thousand DEQ grant, twenty five thousand grant from Cumberland Plateau. We need twenty thousand to cover materials and rental fees. I don't know where that's coming from. Is that for the recommended?
Yeah, that's where the recommended comes.
All right, so that recommended part is this twenty thousand over here in this line. See that, Gus?
Yes.
All right, the next one on the green, the little green dot line eight is PD, that's police department, body worn cameras. The staff estimate is fifty thousand, the recommended, uh, would be nine thousand. That's nine thousand out of this ARPA money. Is that right? All right, so we have a hundred seventy seven thousand and three cents. Wow. Uh, seventeen cameras and fourteen tasers, thirty three thousand six hundred per year for the next four years. Currently budgeted year one, five year agreement warranty, maintenance, uh, cartridges, et cetera. Trying to understand what all that means. Uh, Richard, can you add light to that or John?
I, I would think that, and I may be wrong, but I would think that, uh, the PD would have a equipment budget that this, this lease or agreement would be paid out of the equipment budget.
Yeah, this year we budgeted thirty three thousand six hundred for the new tasers. So essentially, if we go with this plan, we would continue to budget that for the next four years.
Correct.
Cover, you know, this ongoing cost.
So that's what this budgeted thing is.
We're just going to be nine thousand dollars short of what the total is for the five years, so we'll go and pay that upfront. So then our payment would stay the same for the next four years.
Okay.
That's not aligned with the normal equipment you're budgeting.
I think this year we added more because we had to replace the tasers. But, you know, it would, you know, keep that cycle in the next, you know, four years.
Okay.
Could I add something?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I know we're going over this, but if we're going to let the citizens participate and we choose two citizens, shouldn't we wait before we go with this? And it seems like it's a waste of time to go over it.
Well, Doug, that's true, but there was two proposals, one from Richard to take four grid, these four green spaces and move ahead with them. One from you to have citizen involvement. So I'm going to depend on council, but cannot take a vote or consensus at this point. Richard?
If, if my, my request was to proceed with the four that's in green, because those are imperative to the town and to John, uh, because of some time lines with the grant funding.
We don't know what that is two or three years.
No, I'm not talking about the ARPA. I'm talking about.
So if you're just asking for four, shouldn't we just go with those four and leave the rest out?
Yeah, that's what he's saying. That's what he is.
I, I would urge council to also consider the revitalization grant. I'm totally good with going over those four, but I, I really urge council to go ahead and move forward with the revitalization grant. I think, I, I don't, I'm not, that's an amazing opportunity.
I think it's a fantastic thing. We, uh, have a nicer town because of the previous.
You marked that one in green.
Because of the previous one.
Fantastic.
To simplify matters for tonight, uh, we're not trying to put anything off and I totally forward what you're talking about. But to simplify it for tonight, three, four, five and eight are what have green lights. Basically, that's what I call them from the manager. And I would suggest we keep it to that tonight, just a suggestion. Or we'll get bogged down. Well, that's good, but I also want to add something here that's not even in here. I'm just saying. And I'm very serious. There is something I'd like. We all have our passion and dreams, you know? I'm being honest with you. Okay, you understand? So I suggest that we, Doug, I think council can decide at its appropriate meeting, December the fourteenth, uh, about, uh, having a citizen input, uh, how we want to frame that. And I would suggest that at this point, if it's appropriate, I will ask the manager and council if we can give direction. There is no motion. Give direction for the manager to, what's the right word?
I guess if I get consensus on three, four, three, four, five and eight, we'll just move forward on those. And then we'll allow public comment on those four at the, you know, December fourteenth meeting and then cap council officially approve them at that meeting.
December fourteenth meeting.
And the remaining items will be.
We should not actually give you direction other than to a suggestion to prepare something for public hearing. Can we have a public hearing at the December fourteenth meeting?
We can. The advertising would be limited, but there is.
Well, the reason I'm asking, there's the public hearing, John, and then we have public comment. And I'm just trying to make sure we're, we're all covered.
We, we could, the advertising, there isn't specific to that, but I believe that we could have one, um, for that if council wanted to.
Would you, uh, you can refer with the attorney, uh, maybe immediately after this meeting, my suggestion? And we could have a public hearing in December as well as public comment during council. That's Rod Curry's suggestion. Uh, anyone, members of council, how do you feel about that?
I think that's very reasonable.
All right. Now, we want citizen input. We want to discourage any thoughts of, uh, you know, anything other than just what's proper. The way we're treating our citizens. And that's important to everybody here. I know this. In my heart of hearts, I know it. So there you have it. Direction? You have direction now? Okay, good. All right.
So on the citizen, the committee.
That's waiting for December. We have, we can't do that here. We'd have to vote on that. In my opinion.
So you're, you're asking us to be thinking about creating one and if we are, who the, like, somebody mentioned we each would, one or two.
And what are the rules and parameters for that? What do we do? Do we listen to the loudest voice? The wisest voice? That's all so subjective. What you think is right, I may not. And it just enlarges the crowd. My only concern.
Yeah, I would think it would, I, I would suggest that we do, if we do that, we do one per council member and not two.
Because of the.
The more people you get involved, the less change you're going to.
That's what I'm saying, Darryl, enlarges the crowd and I can't hear all the voices as it is. And I think it's very difficult for members of council to do that as well.
It's a good, it's a good.
Well, may I, yeah, when I make, I would suggest that the mayor choose one also.
Well, I'd be happy to and I'd like to.
Okay.
But that's up to the council and how they would pass some kind of vote.
I like it, Darryl.
I got a question.
Nothing. We're not repeating.
We're not letting you vote.
This is called a suggestion.
I got a question, John, uh, for you, and this is not concerning, I shouldn't sway, but, uh, I, I know a little bit about this issue, probably. Ground this issue with Pizza Hut.
Problem like where, front of the school, down behind.
Ain't that a county problem?
I had the same question. It has been a.
It's a county problem, trust me, I know.
I've received so many calls on that, Darryl, over the last several years, over, usually in the winter, because you know how it freezes and people are walking or trying to run.
County and a VDOT issue.
But, yeah.
I, I'd be glad to meet you and we'll talk about it.
And I agree, it is, yeah.
I think we're responsible for that, so it's something that we probably have to work with, need, uh, in the county to try to.
Yeah, well, I know what you're talking about. It's the source and it was caused by certain things, so.
Yeah.
So, that's what he's talking about.
Personally, ducked dying over the middle school and let it run out over there. So I know.
So if they're causing a problem, they should fix it.
It's had, it affected us some of the.
Thank you for your insight. Very much appreciated. So maybe that's something you could, uh, work with John on and you can share it with council. And so we'll all know what's going on because it's on this public list. Fair enough?
Yeah.
So in December, the public comment and the public hearing will just be related to the four items in green, right?
Right.
When are we expecting to have the planning grant back for revitalization?
Soon. We don't have the timeframe. The architectural submissions, um, so we're having to hear back any day now, if, if that part was approved.
How time sensitive is that? We don't.
I think we should knock it out, but it's not in green. That's John's fault for not putting it in green.
Well, could be, you know, whether, you know, it's a progress, in progress.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we are at this point, uh, does council want to continue to discuss the matters on this list, post list? Or does council want to, it is council's choice, want to go with items three, four and five and eight for consideration at the uh, proper consideration, official consideration at the December fourteenth meeting of council, following a public hearing and any public comments that may come, unscheduled comments during the council meeting. All right, does council want to go with any more of these items tonight? We have two or three years. You will define what those are, right, John? And also please forward to everybody what the, uh, what limitations are, uh, what we have, what the plans are by the government. So we'll all try to be on the same page and not be too far off. Thank you, John. Any other, uh, council, do you want to proceed or are you good for tonight?
Good.
Uh, individually, Doug, you good for tonight?
I'm good.
Jeff?
I'm. He's got, he's got these new mints for you.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, uh, one thing I want to announce to the public, the town looks really, really pretty and, uh, everything is decorated, even more decorated. The Christmas spirit is in the air. I feel it and I'm so pleased. And Thursday is the parade that starts at six o'clock and, uh, there have been a lot of preparations for it. We have a town tree up here at the, the town tree here at the, uh, town hall. We have a town tree that was moved down to the section house, both railways are ready and we've got things everywhere. Christmas is in the air.
One last question.
This meeting is recessed. Yes.
Why don't they stop work on the freeway?
I don't know. Meeting's recessed.